Good evening, everybody. This is the Wellington Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. As rescheduled from the 13th due to so. And we are beginning our meeting in carnage order today at 7:04 PM. And everyone's invited to join us at this time for the pleasure to leave.
You guys got to start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is what all those voices, thank you. Okay, we are starting our meeting this evening by introducing and getting to know our student representatives from Center Elementary School. And from Memorial School, thank you very much. Our wonderful principals, would you like to introduce your representative type of plan?
Sure, I'll go first. We have with us tonight two fourth graders. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Edgar Strudzinski and Eliza McDulch.
Hi guys, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I have two representatives with me tonight, the seventh graders Lauren Ross and Angus Breton. I also have some members on Zoom. I have Marin Farrar on there who is an eighth grader. Lucas Anderson, I don't know if he's signed on because he's coming back from vacation. And Iris Fahey, who is another eighth grade student who is a representative. So we have five total right now from HMS.
Hi, great. Well, we of course want to welcome you all and thank you for taking on this important responsibility. We do our best to care for you and your educations. So who better to tell us what to do than you yourselves? Right? Did you guys have something you wanted to present tonight? It looks like you're ready. You're very official.
Do you want me to put your document up for you? It's going on TVs. Does that work right here?
Yes, that looks fine.
All right, that's right. Okay, should I go to the next page?
Um, we were part of the after school program to clean up the trail behind Center School. We built markers to mark the trail, cleaned up safety haveings, and did a lot of breaking. Center School has a great environment where everyone is kind, caring, responsible, and respectful. We just took the winter I Ready reading and math tests and our scores are really good.
You tell me when you want me to go to the slide.
Which day was January 31st? Kids dressed like staff and staff dressed like kids.
What's your badge say? It's in the picture. Do you remember what it says?
Mr. Walsh Superintendent.
Next slide.
At the concert, the fourth grade band and chorus members played their instruments and sang several songs, including Vino Matto, which is a Hebrew song, Light One Candle, I See The Moon, and All Night Out Day. We got popcorn from our PTA and it was very yummy. We watched some short videos about eating popcorn.
I heard it was really loud as their popcorn bags. Is that true? Yep. All right, next slide. All right.
And safety patrol make sure everybody safe walking and following the rules. No, I'm not.
Yeah, you're on it for this round. Hold up, you know, for the next one.
Yeah, next time.
Next one.
Should you do all those, all the safety patrol go all at once?
Basically.
Basically. Who's got this one?
Something we need to work on, safety patrol on the bus. One person gets a section of the bus to monitor to help the bus driver. There are some things we need to work on, like unsupervised time on the bus. We can work together to have safety patrol on the bus and help out.
So one of the things we talked about, this is what we met and had a conversation was, it's Edgar, I think you said it's not all sunshine, how'd you say it? The idea that hey, what can be improved and so that trying to identify the things that we need to improve upon. And so this is something that they're working on. And then is that your last slide right there? Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Alright, so this is all school.
So I apologized in advance. I did not have a chance to get all of the students together due to illness and varying schedules and snow. So I threw together, put together, but shouldn't say throw. A slideshow that kind of highlights some of the events that we have had in the school. The first slide that I have introduces the reps. I just wanted to mention that these students were selected by recommendations from their teaching teams. So that they were selected for leadership, scholarship, being involved in different activities, like the band, the chorus, student council, and the drama, the play, athletics. So these students that are on here represent various facets. We have two excellent musicians with us, Angus and Lauren, both are in the band and they do an amazing job. Some recent school events we've had.
Um, our student council meets when they meet, like after school. And they put together, like, for example, there was like heart glasses or like heart pencils. And they would like sell them at lunch, for a dollar you could buy one and then like write, like the person you wanted to send it to homeroom and then lunch food was too much.
I thought the school was filled with heart glasses.
So we have two basketball teams, the boys and the girls team. The boys team made it to the semifinals, finals of the playoffs against Forest Porter Middle School coached by Matt Nebraska and Kyle Delac. And the girls team was coached by Mr. Ignatius Colombo Jr., coached the girls team with the assistance of Sarah Jean. Will not make it to the playoffs. The JV team did not lose a single game.
We're hoping to build for the future. Did very, very well. So our drama department is presenting A Trip to the Moon, which is a dramatic play composed of short vignettes that take place in various settings. Which feature the moon landing as a central event. We have students in grades five through eight in featured roles. We have students in grades five through eight who are going to be doing sets and art direction. It's actually being directed by a student, Orion Waite, and Mr. Sonnenberg is co-directing. And it's going to be presented on May 17th and 18th.
Um, the junior student council sponsored sore doors for the month of February featuring the theme of kindness. Students working their sore homeroom classes to decorate their doors. The variation on the theme, the winning door will be announced this week. So the homerooms get to decorate their doors in any way to show kindness. And then I think people vote. Yeah, people vote on the best door.
And some of them already are already done, right?
Yeah, the pictures are, yeah, the pictures are taken.
Because I have, I have security cameras in my office and I get to see different views. Upcoming events.
Um, on February 23rd, we have Eastern Regionals. So I think it's course and band. Students will go to this competition and then, I don't know. And then the Winter Gala is happening also February 23rd. It's a dance for students. The Bottle and Can Ride is happening March 23rd. The CMA Music Festival, also March 23rd. The Evening of the Arts is March 27th. Where basically Miss Angel shows her artwork. And then I'm pretty sure we'll be always going to play something. The seventh and eighth grade dance is happening April 5th. And spring sports tryouts are sometime this Friday.
We need to get our coaching going.
The Evening of the Arts, if you have a chance, it's where I purchased several pieces of artwork that are hanging in my office now. There's your thanks.
And I want to thank them for being so flexible because this has been a very changeable situation and for being available on this evening. Bless your vacations.
Thank you. Well, we're outside, you know. Thank you all very much and to your families also for agreeing to be, for allowing you to agree to be our representative and bringing you here and supporting you in this role, this role. Because like I said, it's pretty important. Did anybody else from the board want to ask any of our representatives?
I'm just glad to see everybody here. This is a program that I championed and I'm happy to see the results as quickly as they came. I think you guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay, but you absolutely don't have to. And what I said to them was, if there are items on the agenda that we can get their feedback on, we'll let them know so they can put it into their reporting and add it. So that way you don't have to sit through our meeting speed on. Thank you.
Okay, that was exciting. exhilarating. Um, we have an additional item added to our new and improved agenda. We will be regularly hearing from our PTA. So again, item four is our PTA report and I see our Mary Ann and Carrie Rainbow there.
Hello, Carrie Rainbow, Potter School Road. Just a few PTA updates for you guys. Thanks so much for including us into your agenda. Last week, we just finished up a super cute Valentine's Day photo shoot for the kids at Center. They came out so adorable. The kids had an absolute blast walking down the red carpet. All photos have been sent to their parents. We also plan to do a be kind backdrop and photo shoot at Hall for the students up there later in the year. So that will definitely be something for them to look forward to as well. Last week, both Center and Hall staff members received a wonderful snack spread and hot cocoa bar to help them warm up after these past, this past chili streak. Upcoming events for us that we have planned. The Wonderful Family Gala is this Friday. That came super fast. It's going to be at HMS. And it's going to be an absolute blast. We'll have a photographer taking photos, a DJ playing all of the hits. So the kids can show off their awesome dance moves. We'll also have a concession stand available with food in case you don't have time to make it home for dinner. It's $25 per family. Cash or credit will be accepted. The doors open at 5:45 and the dance will end at 8:00 PM. After that, we are hosting a Readathon for pre-K through eighth graders. This will take place between March 4th and March 22nd. It starts, this starts during Read Across America Week. This fundraiser will be encouraging students to practice reading while also having fun counting their minutes and raising money to purchase brand new classroom headphones for all students. Working in the school, I personally know how much these are needed. So it's a great goal to reach for. The PTA will be distributing bookmarks that the students can color to kick off this fundraiser next week. We'll also post a general donation link on our PTA as well as in town Facebook pages in the coming weeks. So keep out an eye for that. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out to us via membership.willingtonpta@gmail.com. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Before you go real quick, Carrie, I think I saw an email about the, the dance. Are you still in need of volunteers? This would be a great opportunity to mention what you still need.
Um, yeah, I mean, we're always looking for more help. We haven't filled with a lot of the same people that also have kids. So we would love more help during the concession stands. So if anybody has time between that six and eight hour range, absolutely message us and we will slide you right in there.
Great.
Thank you.
That is a wonderful community event. I'm glad to see they're going to be creative enough to take that on. Okay, uh, thank you. We're moving on to item five, which is a presentation from Principal Tishonis regarding student substance abuse and mental health data for her school.
Hi, I put a slideshow together that Phil has. So tonight I'm going to be sharing an important, some important pieces of information that we garner from our survey that we did with CERAC. Just so you know, some of these slides may have very specific information. So if there's questions that you have for each, any of the slides, just interrupt and ask. There'll be time for general questions at the end. But hopefully things will be mostly self-explanatory. So the students in our school took this survey in mid-December. It CERAC stands for Supporting and Engaging Resources for Action and Change. It mainly deals with communities in Eastern Connecticut. And it works with issues surrounding mental health, challenges, addiction, well-being, wellness, any of those things, making healthy choices and advocacy for those things. CERAC has conducted these surveys for a number of years. This is the first time I personally have been involved. But they are, they compiled data from surveying 50,000 youth across the region to identify issues and attitudes around substances and mental health, behaviors, substance abuse, gambling, just various indicators that we would use. Plus, they also identify protective factors. So things that our school system has going for it that can help and support kids who are in this, in this very precarious place. Most of these resources that they provide are grant funded and free of charge. So the survey that we administered to students, we only administered to grade six through eight because grade five, it was felt as though some of the content was not age appropriate and the data might not be helpful or inform us. We gave parents the opportunity to see the survey in advance and gave parents the opportunity to opt out. We did have one parent taking that, taking that option. The survey offered complete anonymity to students. The only identifier that they had to put on this survey was their grade level. And that was mainly just to identify their age. And there was no conversation that took place during this test. So like during the time that they were in their homeroom class taking the test, they did not, there was no discussion around the questions unless students had a difficulty reading a question or understanding a question. In total, 119 of 130 students took the test due to absences on that day. When the survey was administered, we did not offer a second administration of it. It was a one-time situation. So the first set of questions that you'll see asked students about how often they use specific substances. And in this particular case, this is students who reported never using any of the substances that are listed there. The other options besides never were, not the past 30 days, occasionally, frequently, or almost every day. But the data was statistically insignificant for those other amounts. Never was the overwhelming choice. I did include data from the eighth grade because if you can see there, most of the times where I had indicated eighth grade, it was when it was statistically significantly different for the eighth grade as opposed to the total population. The next slide, oh, on the bottom of that slide, just you see, there's also other, other substances that students had 100% never. And actually, some of the students didn't even know what some, some of those substances were, which I consider a very good thing. When they don't know what something means. A lot of students were very confused about bath salts because they weren't sure if they may take a nice tubby. They, they didn't realize that bath salts have two different, two different meanings. The next slide listed other medications as well, such as over the counter medications, prescriptions, and inhalants, which are things like nitrous oxide. Notice though, energy drinks, that is quite a concern as energy, energy drinks are shown to have very negative effects on a young person's body. We do have a policy in our school where we do not allow any drinks besides water. That's due to a number of things, not including having them spill and make a mess, but also caffeinated, over-sugar drinks are very, very difficult for a body, a young body to process.
Okay, before you move on, can you clarify the energy drink, those numbers? Because they don't add up to 100 and you have it as a never. So I understand the other ones are, like OTC, never was 96.6%, but that, the energy drink thing is a bit confusing. Can you clarify that?
That was the way the data was reported. 64.9% stated never. Then in their lifetime, 35.1% never used it. So like, I have, I'd have to go back and look at the survey again.
I think it's three different things. So 60, it's not, don't add, they're separate. So never 64.9%, never had an energy drink in their lifetime. I think it's where it matches the recent. Is it like an additional piece of information if they had had one?
So is the life, so is the lifetime number an affirmative? Like I've had it in my lifetime?
Yes.
Okay.
I've had it in my lifetime.
So that's positive.
Yes.
In, in, in the way I'm reading it.
The recent number is the one that troubled me.
Yeah.
Because obviously 15, like if you look at it, 15% of students having energy drinks is something that we don't necessarily want. The next question asked, why students chose not to drink? And drinking was the one that was the most statistically stood out. Students, as you can see, parents themselves and no interest are a very, very high percentage of reasons for not drinking. Score comes in at 34.5. Most, I just was on a webinar the other day, and parental approval or disapproval of drug and alcohol use and teaching about drug and alcohol use were the most important pieces of avoidance of those substances for minors. This next slide asks about personal perceptions around substance abuse. So, what, and this asks about peers. So what this actually is asking is, how do you feel about your peers using those substances? And many, as you can see, strong disapproval in, in many of the cases, again, grade eight, the number changes in that there is less of a strong disapproval for grade eight than there are in grades six and seven. This one talks about perceived availability. So, students have an opportunity to determine how available some of these substances are to them. As you can see, alcohol is relatively easy, or at least 33.9% of students say that alcohol is relatively easy. This matches very, very closely with the data that is from the area in that alcohol is easy to obtain at a house or at a peer's home. There are parental things we can put in place to have parents take control of their alcohol in their home. But as you can see, alcohol is the one that's perceived most easy to obtain. The others are not as easy, which is why we probably don't see the use of them as prevalent. Of the most concerned in this survey was what was reported around mental health and suicidal ideation. In the survey, in the past 12 months, 24.3% of students in our student body had thoughts of hurting themselves. And 23.4, 22.4% had hurt themselves in the last 12 months. 22.4% felt sad, so sad or hopeless that they, for, for two weeks or more, that they refrained from activities. And then 10.9% of students in our student body, which equals 12 students, if you take a look at it numerically, have, had considered attempting suicide and have had a plan. This is a very, very sobering number, one which we do not take lightly. And we have to think about interventions and things to put in place to help those children. Because we know that mental health is, is something that, mental health care is something that's been difficult to attain here in this region. So what we had, what we've done is we've taken a look at the areas of strength in our school. We have a very strong anti-bullying policy. We built the program much, a great deal since I've arrived. We have a very stringent investigation we go through. We have, we have documentation. We have, you know, it's a, it's a well-established policy and protocol. We have a system for reporting. Everything was thoroughly investigated. We've increased the scope of this to include harassment and mean spirited behavior. So because there are some behaviors that don't rise to bullying, but that certainly can affect mental health. So things like exclusion of children at lunchtime, spreading false stories, things that we used to call poking fun, but really are not funny at all. We also have a variety of clubs and organizations that are inclusionary. We have Dungeons and Dragons. We have drama, we have GSA, art, physical activity. So we have things that students can find friends and peers that like things that they like, which is very important, and believe in things that they believe in or, or, or have a passion for things that they have a passion for. We have intersulastic sports. And we've been really creative in securing certified coaches, very creative. We offer enrichment and academic support to students who have either really excelled academically or have had challenges. We have a very strong student-staff connection. Faculty and students are very close. And many of the times when something's going on with a kid, it's a teacher that brings us, brings it to our attention. And we also have a really strong music and drama program. One of the things that I would like to see is possibly having an opportunity for adult mentors for students who might want to pursue a trade or an interest or a career in something because we don't have that right now. And it's something that I'd really love to build. The next slide that we have outlines the support systems we have at Hall. We have a tier one intervention of second step, which is our social and emotional learning curriculum. It educates all students in the very important topics around bullying, setting goals, respecting others, respecting yourselves, and setting yourself up for, for success. The next level of intervention, we have Mrs. Talona and Mr. Rose, who are individual school counselors. They are phenomenal. We have our mental health care specialist, Ms. Elizabeth Neiser, who takes groups at lunchtime and also is spearheading our attendance committee, which takes a look at why students are absent and kind of puts a plan in place to approach those things. A lot of times, those absences are due to mental health. And then we have our school-based health center, which is Ms. Danielle Claire, who is from the outside agency, who is part of our school, who sees students. And lastly, we have outreach. We work with outside agencies like the Joshua Center and other, other hospitals and other types of hospitalization programs, therapists, counselors, to have kids see, see somebody more, was more clinically able to handle what they have going on. We also have a school nurse who is, in my opinion, one of the most undervalued people. I know with COVID, she was very incredible and continues to be one of the most caring people in our building. She is right on the front line of our kids when they have struggles. The next is what we're doing about it. So I'm working with Karen Cody from Wellington Human Services, who has worked with, who's worked with me on grant funding and on programs. We already have a program coming to the school next week on Thursday. Interactive TV, it's interactive theater educational programming. They're going to be working with our fifth and sixth graders on various topics. They do skits and it's like funny skits and kids can actually participate and ask questions and things. Fifth and sixth is going first, seventh and eighth is going second. Obviously, different subject matter. Fifth and sixth will be more around social media use, kindness, reaching out if you need help with somebody you know is, is having difficulty. Seventh and eighth grade has a lot more to do with social media, inappropriate photographs being sent. That's a very big one. Also, reporting when somebody you know is hurting because it's not tattling, it's helping somebody. And students have to understand the difference between finding help for somebody and snitching because that's got a very bad rap. Finding help for somebody and snitching because that's got a very bad rap. Um, I'm continuing to pursue professional development for teachers. Um, we have a professional development happening on third, on the fifteenth of March around. Uh, seeing the signs of possible self-harm and suicidal ideation. Finding out, it's called QPR, it's the gold standard in, in, in suicide prevention. It's question, persuade, refer, and it is um going to be led by an actual uh professional in this area. Um, I'm going to have the same uh thing for students through this um suicide prevention regional council. And that is also to help teach coping strategies. One of the most important pieces, obviously, are parent programs because as I mentioned, parent attitudes and involvement is really where. Where the rubber meets the road. So we have a program called Hidden in Plain Sight, which allows parents to. Uh, it, it actually sets up a student's bedroom and shows parents where things might be hidden. Because trust me, there's a lot of creativity. And um also just how you as a family can help your child if they're struggling. What are the signs you should look for? What are some things you can do at home to help make your home um safe for your student? And then QPR training for parents as well. And that's just now until the end of the year. Uh, my plan is for the beginning of next year to hit the ground running with more of these programs so that. Um, parents can, parents, students, staff can be part of these programs from the start of the year. Anyone have any questions, you mean?
Alright, so, um. Do we get a copy of this?
Yes, yeah, yep.
Okay. Um, is there any way I or we or anybody who's interested, did you get a copy of the test of the kid that are leaving test? The survey for the kid that you took?
I believe I have a hard copy somewhere. I'd have to, I think I could get my hands on it. I know I provided it for parents, so.
Right.
I, I, it's somewhere.
Okay, um. As far as your um prevention strategies. What's the current protocol for anonymity with your anti-bullying strategy?
There is complete anonymity. So if, if a student puts in a, a files a report, we try to keep it as anonymous as possible.
So do they file a report with a teacher or do they have their own? So basically. Is there a way that essentially they could fill something out either online or on paper and then just drop it off in a box somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
The um, and the, the mean spirited form is on our website. It's also available. Each teacher has copies in their classroom. We have copies in the main office, this guidance counselor has copies, I have copies. So we put, they're available for students.
Okay. Um. My other question is. So seeing the results from eighth grade were so much different than everything else. Do you feel that eighth grade should have perhaps an additional? Presentation or an additional. A piece of intervention because their, their needs seem to be a lot more specific than some of the other grades?
Yeah, the seventh and eighth grade presentation that is taking place on the twenty ninth will include some of those um. Higher risk behaviors about, you know. The refusal tactics around using substances. We also have, um, I have literature coming, um. I think it's called Twenty One for a Reason. Um. And it's, yeah, twenty one reasons why. It's all about why twenty one is the age for legal use of drugs and alcohol. And it kind, kind of talks about the physiology of the young body and how. How drugs and alcohol can affect. Your, you know, your development. Um, we're also, I'm working with Dr. Conley to um bolster our health curriculum. And making sure that students are educated. In our curriculum around some of these risk factors as well.
Okay.
Are you finding that you have, did you say most of it was um? The programs were free or through grants and so on?
Yes, um, the interactive educational theater, it does carry a cost, but Karen is um using grant funding for that. Um, and, and the QPR, the trainings that we have through CIRAC and through, it's an um organization called Erica's Lighthouse. Those are free of charge.
Okay.
I have to sign off on her grants, just so you know.
Right.
So when she writes a grant that's gonna be connected to the school, I'd sign off on.
I don't know a lot about this particular thing. I was at a CIP meeting, probably within the last month. And our first selectman was talking about um Senate Note twelve oh one, which involves um towns. Who have um cannabis facilities in their town getting, I don't wanna say kickback money, but. For that, and there were several different ways the municipality could use those funds. And one of the things listed was mental health or addiction services. Um, also it said education programs. So, um, maybe. Uh, that's something that our board can do is point out that perhaps our selectmen could use some of those funds. To help our students, like now. That's already going around.
Yeah, we're very, yes, we're aware.
Okay, so what can, do we need, what can we do?
I think from a funding standpoint, I think right now we have what we need and some of that came through the additional RFSR funding. And that was, we're, we're looking at that. We have a stronger connections grant that Marsha and I, good night, guys. Um, spearheaded and we got just fourteen thousand in that grant. So there's, there are. Specific grants right now where we have funding. It's just finding the right programs and getting the right people in the room.
Mm hmm.
I think when it's student-based for us, we can target students, meaning grade levels, things like that in the buildings and we have supports for them. Um. And case point is the parents are a big piece of this.
Right, which is what I was just gonna say. Maybe um. Maybe a good place for some of those particular funds would be with parent um outreach or information. I think. There may be parents who have no idea what happens to their youngsters during the day. That's kind of how it goes sometimes. And other parents hear a lot about what their child goes through the day and what they witness, see and experience. And so if that information's all at home, there might be confusion about what the school's responsibility is. Um, and parents maybe don't know how to go forward when they know something. So. Maybe there's some, something we can do there because as you stated, the, the parents are the biggest factor. So let's make sure that they know about the um mental health services offered through the school, but also. Maybe that's something that we can look at, is, is building that part up a little bit.
I do know that in my research, and I've spent a lot of time on this, I'm personally very invested in things like this, um. Social media, cellphone use and the algorithms that these social media platforms have for children, it's like a rabbit hole. So, say you click and like something that's all about body image, you're all about what dieting. You know, you could in three hours be on an, on an anorexia page and not even really. Be doing anything unusual. You could just follow the links and then it, the phone just starts to. Kind of tailor itself to what you're clicking on and then you're in this spiral. Um, it's, it's quite upsetting when you, when. You know, you, you have a child who's looking at a phone and, and all they're doing is questioning their own worth.
Do you think a modified version would have been good for the fifth graders?
For the survey?
Yeah.
They didn't offer a modification.
Okay.
And to be honest with you. Knowing our fifth grade.
Mm hmm.
And knowing the level of questions, the survey may have served to be more frightening.
Mm hmm.
And alarming to the fifth grade. There, there were things on there that they may not have understood.
Right.
That would have required, uh, it would have been, I think, had more of a negative effect than yielded positive results for us.
My only thought is, cause I think that would have. Highlighted some students in the fifth grade.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure.
And that's what my thought is there.
And we are very aware of um children who are struggling in those grades as well. We have other methods of.
Cool.
Establishing what their social emotional health looks like besides this survey. This was more, this was this. I was looking at this more of a substance abuse issue because in my tenure, I have seen an increase in substances being used. They're very easy to hide.
Hmm.
Vape pens are tiny.
Yeah.
There's no smell, there's no lighter, there's no matches. Um, it's, they are, they look like a, a USB. Drive sometimes or candy, they smell like body spray. I mean, it's really impossible to detect. Um, and it, it, it's alarming. Um, so wanting to understand whether, you know. I was becoming hysterical about it, you know, not to use that word, which I know is kind of non political right now, but I. Wanted to be sure that my perception of the problem was actually correct. And I was, I wasn't happy to see these numbers, but it made me feel like, okay, at least I'm not the one who's making a bigger deal about this. I really am concerned from a health standpoint of what's happening to the kids and their lungs around the vape. Um, and there's a very fine line between the nicotine and the THC and that THC is one hundred percent chemical. And you, you just, what the effects it had on our body is.
Mm hmm.
Quite alarming.
I have a question. Um, how, how was or will this information be disseminated to the students?
Um, I have not disseminated it to the students yet. Um, I'd have to have a conversation with my admin team and with my teachers to determine what would be the best way to talk about this kind of thing.
But, I mean, I feel like the door was open when they took the survey. I, I would. I mean, if we're gonna be open and honest about the conversations that we're gonna have with kids, I would want. Sadly, I would want my kids to, my kid to see the results of the survey that they took. And maybe that makes them look around a little bit more and say, oh my god, what's going on?
Mm hmm.
Um, I was just curious.
Yep.
Did the result, oh, sorry, did the result go to the parents?
Not yet.
Okay.
This will be on your, in the board page, the presentation. One thing I wrote down was. Do we need to just, and not really, we, it's MK really need to. Do a separate video zoom herself. Just with additional explanations that's just this, so someone doesn't have to watch our whole BOE meeting. Um, that is just around this, that we can send down a digital backpack where someone could just click a link and go, give me some information. You and I know how fast these are, we turn people off quickly, right? So, we have to be able to give information, even, you know, adults, fast. It's gotta be to the point. And the data's gotta be sharpened right there in, in your face. And that's, I think that's something that, we can look at that presentation and go, how can we get the? Uh-ohs, you know, the wow, look at that piece of data right there in front of people. And, you know, whether it's conversation starters with your kids. Um, I think the easy stuff for us is to fall through on our side, but we're just a piece of that puzzle, right? So, I think that's part of it. This is all pretty new data for us. I've never experienced this as a principal or a, or superintendent uh seen data come out like that. We've seen our climate surveys, very different. Very different data. Um, and so now it's like, okay, what do we do about it? The program, programming is part of it. Um, the parent piece is the biggest piece that every district is struggling with. Because we, we've put on um. The Hidden in Plain Sight in, in prior years, uh. And I could have predicted who was gonna be in the room. I don't like saying that, but it was, you know. It, it's, we need everybody to hear that and see those types of presentations, cause that's how you make an impact.
There was the other presentation too about um like apps and what.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's, it's, it's just getting more of those and figuring out how do we, and maybe that's something that we need to think about. How can we use grant money to? You know. Connect with families so they know like, hey, you're having a really important role. And if it's conversation starters. Maybe that's a, a piece that we can help provide, but we don't know what it is yet. And that's a bit part of your research, trying to figure out like. Cause we can do whatever we do in the schools. That's seven, seven hours a day, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's the rest of it.
I'm, I'm working with other principals, um, middle school principals specifically on. Determining speakers and presentations that are worthy because I, we had one um. Not this past year, the year before, that was phenomenal. It was Ryan's story. It was really amazing. We offered two programs, one was for parents. We only six parents come. Out of a hundred and eighty students in our school and then we also invited center school. We had one this past year, we had three parents come. So, and the one this year wasn't even, I mean, I was not pleased with that presentation in terms of. What I had heard and what I had wanted. Cause we met before, let's tailor it to your, you know, your population. What is it that you need? Let me know what you'd like me to hit on. Then I give him this list and I get nothing. Nothing I asked for. It was like Walmart doing substitutions when you do the. So, um, just very, uh, it, I wanna make sure that whatever program we're bringing in. Is going to resonate and is going to be worthwhile. Because if you have a bad one, then everyone's like, oh, I heard that one was bad. They don't wanna come to the next, so.
Maybe teaming up with our GTA could be helpful too. I mean, I'm sure you.
Yes, I have. They, they, they helped us actually with both of the presentations. Um, we got, we got funding from them and they put out the information. They did the, they helped with the information around the social media and apps one that we did that was all Zoom. We're trying different formats because not everyone can come in the evening to a school. That is somewhat limiting. They have children. You know, do we offer childcare when they, you know, there's all of these different things to think about. Um, what, but the biggest piece for me is a quality program that's worthwhile.
Right, yeah. Well, thank you for that information and including all the things you're trying and doing and. The whole like horse to water thing, right? Does anybody have anything else you wanted to ask your suite? And are you outside? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything on the agenda? This is, they're not working today.
Yeah.
See that, they're not working today. Um, I'll make it up to them some other way, but do you have anything on the agenda that they need to stay for? Do you believe they need to stay to the budget stuff towards the end? Are there any other questions you, are things gonna need? I have all the data on the calendar. We've already gone through it. They know what I'm gonna say.
And they've been available enough for us. Thank you so much.
I'd like to say please go home. You're okay with that? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Well, can we hear, let's see. Item number six is a presence to speak. Um. Have anyone in the room? Um, please go ahead and raise your hand virtually if you're interested in speaking outside. We do have another opportunity at the end of our meeting as well. Seven more people. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, item number seven is the chair report. Oh, it's my turn to talk. Chair report. Um, I did just wanna share that at our January meeting, we spoke about reaching out to the Summers um school district regarding the loss of some of their students. Um, and difficulty of, uh, you know, everyone. Coming to terms with that. Um, Jen helped me sort of come through a brief. Email to Superintendent Galway and he did respond back and thanked us for our sentiments. And wished us a wonderful year where students thrive and that um we all, the board members, find fulfillment in the important work that you do. For your district. So that coming from such a superintendent going through that sort of thing in his district. Just reminded me why we sit in these seats.
Mm hmm.
And so it's very important work that we're doing and I was thankful to hear back from him. I certainly did not expect a response. Um, and that was really the one thing I think I needed to share to me. Um, moving on to number eight is communications. We did have.
Yeah, I think you did all, you were the only one that worked on that chain. I think Brenda added you to it.
I did get it.
Okay, so, so everybody got the two uh emails from Rick Malone. I think that was the only thing that. I know, unless you've got something else.
No. We've all had a chance to go through that and absorb that information. Um, if we have questions, what do we do? Reach back to them directly?
Uh, if you have questions about it, you can just ask me and I'll, I'll reach back after.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, item nine is our superintendent report, beginning with Stappy.
Okay, so, um, I kind of alluded to this last time. Sean Conlon resigned uh his PE teacher position at HMS. That was uh personally, personal reasons in his life. He had things, something going on. We did hire Victor Hurtuck as a long-term sub. That is for the remainder of the school year. Um. It's a weird time to hire, so I'm gonna post that position later on for the full position later in the spring. We'll have a better candidate pool. We'll have a better candidate pool. It'll be later in the year where we have some graduates coming out, um, potentially that, you know, will increase our pool, so. Um, that's one position. We also have, uh, Louise Regard is a special education teacher. She's a, we brought her back in, uh, because some of the, uh, things that we're dealing with right now in that, in that, um, program. Um, she's a long-term special ed sub at Center School, and she's providing, uh, necessary coverage for services, so thanks to her. Um, Rebecca Pilver, I already told you, submitted her letter of retirement at the end of the school year. She's the one that will be the, uh, as long as it goes through, the staff support specialist at Hall School for twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, we received the letter, letter of resignation from the HMS Special Education Teacher, Joanne Kamirovsky. Uh, that's effective at the end of the, the school year. Joanne is a retired special education teacher who came back to work for two years, uh, which they're allowed to do when they're in a shortage area. She's at the end of her second year. Um, so they basically, when they retire, they get their benefits, but they also, in a shortage area, can work and collect full salary. So, we actually have two of those people right now. Um, and I expect the second one is probably going to be submitting the same thing. Um, but I, it's been great to have them. So she'll actually, I think, retire? I don't know. Um, so we have her, and then, um, the other person will, will wait and see. They, you know, they wanna maintain their position, they would have to stop their retirement benefits. Um, but I'm not sure, so sure that won't happen, okay? Or pause, I should say. Um, the district health stats. I, just so you know, I get a monthly, uh, a monthly, a Monday report from Eastern Highlands on all the, um, basically COVID cases, flu cases, kind of in, in the region. We've had thirty COVID cases since January first, thirty. Um, the wave that went through Hall School, uh, happened first, and now we're kind of ending, I hope, this long weekend with Center School. Uh, we have been very creative in staffing. I talked about that tonight with kind of sending people all over the place. Twelve of the thirty cases were staff members. So, that coverage creates real challenges, and when you don't have huge amounts of subs, we have to get creative. Um, so my group is, my crew is doing a really good job with that. We work through with Eastern Highlands, and we have those things to monitor, whether it's a flu outbreak or we've had hand, foot, mouth in the prior years, where we work with them and just make sure our protocols are, in place are good. Um, the facility study, I did hear from Q A N M, and I think they were hoping to have something for this meeting this month. Uh, they are waiting for their, their mechanical, electrical and plumbing report to be finalized. That was a piece that was, they subcontracted out. Um, they're supposed to have the report from the subcontractor, uh, in a week. Um, they had the date, they still gave it the twenty-fifth, and that we will have the presentation sometime in March. So, I, I'm looking forward to that. I have no idea what that report says, I, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens when it comes in, but, uh, that's where they're at. The plumbing request, that had gone to town meeting, there was a snap through, I guess, with the posting. Even though they did hold the town meeting, it wasn't valid, I guess. I didn't know they held it tonight at seven PM. I expect that it's gonna go through no problem. But that was the plumbing meeting, uh, plumbing funds that we had at that meeting, um, twenty thousand dollars, and it was for Center School. I don't expect an issue, but I'll let you know, uh, what, what the outcome was. Um, the after-school grant that we received, uh, I learned that it, the cost of the paraprofessionals to run our after-school program, the half-day programs that we have currently, um, we're gonna be able to use our grant funds to cover that this year. Any money to bring some money back into the budget and help that big special ed balance come down some, we will take, so that's good news. Um, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's there. We did post the opening for the after-school program director, um, and we're looking for applicants and that, and I did reach out, um, today, actually. I had a good conversation with the folks with Kids Kingdom, because they're starting to get requests and, and looking at after-school programs. Do they keep it going? What do they do? Um, and so we were talking about, I would be open with that as far as our numbers, um, because it's budgetary. If we only have so many dollars to work with, we can only accept so many kids in, and, um, their numbers are really low for their after-school programs right now. Um, we'll see what we get. Um, so, uh, we'll see how that goes. Uh, the classroom flood, uh, Matt Jensen and I, we worked with several different professionals. Samantha's company included, or her included, I should say, um, EMCOR, we had, uh, another company, Action Arrow, to look at the why, because it's happened too many times. I'm just tired of that. Um, we removed the three exterior grates from the building, and someone said, why is the superintendent outside? Uh, that's because it costs fifteen hundred dollars to do the work, and I said, I'm gonna do that with Matt. So, we basically cut the caulk off, we undid the screws, pulled the grates off. We found some, um, in the sheet metal, some punch, uh, there's like metal punches that you put in for plumbing and electrical that were open and straight to the pipes. You wouldn't know that until you pulled the inside cover off and the exterior cover off. So, needless to say, those are now covered. Uh, we did put in a bunch of spray foam. Uh, we made sure all the felt that's in there for insulation went all the way through. Uh, we didn't have a freeze last night. Um, it was ten degrees last night here, and nothing froze. I was nervous about it this morning, so I'm hopeful that, that solution is, is good. Um, and we are working through, we still have to, uh, replace the heating unit in, um, it's not the motor, it's the, the coil in one of the classrooms that did freeze as part of this. Uh, the last thing is we'll, we'll put the caulk back, and fingers crossed this solution is good. Um, the units that did not freeze, we opened up, uh, one good one, no punchouts that were missing. So, I kind of get the feeling like maybe we've isolated the issue, so we'll see. Uh, and, and I just did wanna say, thanks to Adam Zalonis, uh, he is the parent who's been following along with what's going on. And he brought us a very expensive, uh, thermal camera to borrow for a week, and we took loads of photos. And just to see where we, where we were losing cold air with covers off, interior, exterior, it was just very helpful, so thanks to him for, for that. Um, the capital improvement projects, I presented the board's needs last week at CIP. I think they understand what, what the board's request is, with the minimum of one point five million dollars. I don't know how it's gonna go. Um, and the funding is still a big question, um, but they will be talking about that tomorrow night at seven PM. Their meeting is here. Uh, so we'll see where that goes. Uh, and then the upcoming events, I think between PTA and the, the student reps here, we know about the winter gala. I was gonna talk about the, uh, DC trip with the Bowls and Cans, and what was coming up, uh, they've already touched upon it all. The only thing I'll say is that, um, we are presenting to the Board of Finance on Thursday night, the budget on Thursday night. Um, and then the budget hearing, the town meetings are coming up, referendums coming up. And then I did go to the boys' basketball game in Columbia. What a great group of, uh, players we have. Uh, there's some young players on there that I maybe, uh, I'm gonna venture a guess and say, we might have a banner on the wall in a couple of years, because there's some young players in that group that are outstanding. Uh, so, uh, congrats to them, and that's all I have in my report.
You know, at the game before the finals, there were big pictures of these players' heads on yardsticks. That's awesome.
They made, they made their fat heads there called.
The teachers were in the stands with the kids and a bunch of parents shouting and putting in hollerin' and waving around.
They brought them to Columbia.
It was awesome. It was so awesome. That's why I had the opportunity to pop in, but yeah.
Yes.
It's become a fan, so everybody showed at these school games. All right, uh.
I just wanna say, yeah, thank you, Phil, for climbing on the roof. Or whatever you did up there. I appreciate that.
Hands and knees, we're good.
Yeah.
We'll leave that on the list of things for our new facilities manager.
I'd love that. I don't mind doing it, but, you know, I also, and I'll, I have to say this because eh, when you, you do as you say, and you kind of set the example, people were asking me why I was doing it. Well, we have a budget freeze, and how am I gonna justify something that we know we can do ourselves? I didn't justify that. I just didn't feel right about that. I couldn't fix it, but I surely could put eyes on it, and it was the labor portion of it. And so just letting teachers know, like, this is why I'm doing it, why you see me out here, because I'd rather save the fifteen hundred dollars than, um, you know, spend it where I'm, when I'm not spending money in your classrooms right now, so, uh, it'll work. We are, it's coming from grants, and I don't have grants for that, so.
That's what kind of integrity we're working.
Okay, thank you.
Try it, yeah.
Okay, item ten is our financial report for February.
Yes, so, I'm gonna venture a guess and say, I've got one more month of a budget freeze. Um, I do have some good things that are happening. I'll share with you tonight. Um, but we're still in, in that zone. So, really, when you look at the programs here, um, this is some of the money, like, we, we had to spend the, the, the money for the flooded room, but that's gonna come back from insurance. We did make some staffing adjustments with Sean Conlon leaving, and there's some, there's some savings there, so that's been adjusted. The special ed, um, line, there was an adjustment or outplacement tuition, transportation costs. Um, it's still significant in that program. Um, we did encumber the transportation for sports for the remainder of the year. Uh, I did not realize that we'd only done one, uh, season, so we did for the remainder of the year, just so we could see a balance uh, in there. Health services, you know, we can't not buy Band-Aids and things we need, so we had to buy some things there. Um, I did reclassify, there was some curriculum work that did happen, uh, late summer, early fall, uh, that we went back and we were able to, through the grant, reclassify it to the grant for professional development. So, it freed up nine, it was nine thousand dollars worth of, that was a lot of hours for various people. So, instead of coming out of the budget side, it came out of the grant. Um, so that was a, a plus. No change in utilities, the operations and maintenance, we, um, had a boiler repair at, at Hall. Uh, the E-rate is so we can get funds, we have to pay our E-rate provider for all the, the, uh, basically legal documentation and reporting we have to do, so that was encumbered, and then the frame was updated for current staffing levels. So, can I go to part B of this? Are you okay with that? So, part B of this, and I'm gonna stop sharing, um, is, uh, a couple things. So, and I'll tell you the big picture. So, the first thing is the transfer of fifty thousand dollars from Program Ten Health Insurance to Program Three Special Education. Donna and I have gone through this. We feel real confident, um, that fifty thousand dollars is a fair number because of our current census of who we have taking insurance, and that we have some savings there that we can make that transfer now to bring that special ed number down, because we do wanna see that number come down. Um, and instead of just leaving it in the Program Ten, let's actually move it and move the number. We had a conversation that it could be more than fifty, and we wanna be conservative. Um, there's a chance that there could be another fifty later on, but I would like to try and start whittling this number down. So, right now, tonight's, the request will be for you to transfer fifty thousand dollars. You have to do that. I cannot, um, from Program Ten to Program Three. That's part one of this conversation of how we bring that number down. The other is, uh, I, about six weeks ago, went through our, our ARPESR grant, and there was some funding in that grant. Erin, uh, her insurance came out of the Board of Ed budget because we were so flush, and it left some money in the ARPESR account. And so, we actually applied through the state to readjust our grants so that I could use some of that funding to maintain our staffing levels, because, I'm gonna be really blunt, to fill a five hundred thousand dollar hole or three hundred thousand on your total budget without spending another dollar. You don't get that by not spending money on supplies. You cut people, okay? Really blunt. Um, we're not doing that, and so one of the things in the ARPESR grant, which allows you to do is to maintain your current staff. So, I wrote it, I finally got an answer on Friday. Uh, I think it was my third email, but they're super busy. Um, they approved forty-five thousand dollars from our ARPESR grant to off-seller salaries this year. That's huge. So, it's gonna be applied in, um, I don't know it's gonna be applied in special ed, but it's gonna basically free up forty-five thousand dollars towards that bottom line, okay? So, there's, talking about ninety-five thousand dollars just came off the special ed number, okay? Yeah.
Should I wait?
Let me do the, the last two, and then, then you can do it. Um, excess cost. I, I don't know how this is even legal, but they broke, uh, towns into different tiers. Uh, we were in, in, in spur, basically based upon your, um, you know, your ability to pay, we'll call it, your poverty levels. We were in the lowest tier, meaning we were gonna get the highest reimbursement, which was ninety-one or ninety-two percent for excess cost, um, for special ed. They only have so much money, though, and when their budget's only so much, and it goes up fifty million dollars across the state for special ed, our number's gonna be at like seventy-two percent. To me, that should just be illegal, like, I can't do that, but they apparently can't. So, we're only gonna get around seventy-two percent. I think we calculated higher than that. We didn't calculate the ninety-one, ninety-two percent, but, um, it's gonna drop what we expected to get a little bit. We're still gonna get a big chunk of money from the state. That's supposed to come in this, the first round this week. I'm really hoping this number, um, the special ed number is, is below two hundred thousand in the whole next meeting. We'll see. Um, and then the last thing, the cyber insurance I mentioned, like, it's a nine thousand dollar difference. I'm plugging all of those things, just saying that nine thousand is going towards special ed. The balance of this will be the non-lapsing account, and to your point, Arthur, earlier, I'm doing everything in my power not to lose that entire buffer, because it is meant to be a buffer. It is your only buffer. And if you have nothing, that's a little scary. Um, and so if we can, you know, not spend that entire non-lapsing account, um, that will be helpful. I also would like to open the budget up after our March meeting, if all these things come through, because people are asking, and I'm denying requests right now. I'm just gonna be really blunt. They're asking for things, and I'm, I'm saying yes to things where I have grant funds that I can apply it. The only things I'm saying thing, yes to are like the mandatory things, like you need Band-Aids for kids, you need, you need to have pylon ball, things like that. Um, and like maintenance fixes. I can't not do those fixes. So, we're really holding tight right now to the purse strings. Um, but I hope I'm gonna be able to loosen those after your March meeting. So, that's my spiel. The, the thing that you do need to act on this is to transfer fifty thousand dollars from Program Ten to Program Three now.
Um, I, I just wanna have a, a little bit of a discussion about how, what you're doing now will impact the budget next year. So, the special ed budget is not likely gonna go down much next year. Uh, is that fair to say, given that these out placements will still influence next year?
So, there, right now, your current budget only has two out placements in it, budgeted. Your, the budget that's in front of you that you're voting on tonight has five.
So, next year's has two, you think?
No, your current budget, the reason why we're in such a hole is because we planned for two, and then we had four and five.
Yeah.
Now, um, when we, Marcia and I planned, um, I could not say this to you, but we were planning four or five, um, knowing we had, um, some things in, that were in movements. Um, and we're, we have dollars in four or five. So, what we have in the current budget right now for next year is good. We're not gonna be in a hole as long as the budget goes through. That's why I say, it's like, it's legal, you have to provide it. They, they thought something, it's not coming out of special ed.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned about the amount of kind of shucking and jiving you are doing at this moment to pile things in the special ed budget when it's gonna be likely the same next year.
Which is, we don't know that. The budget we have for next year is, is in the budget. This year, it's not.
Yeah, okay.
And it's because when you do the budget, it's February, right? From February to the start of school, a lot happens. And we can't guarantee that. If this happens next year, if you have some, uh, you know, somebody move into district and they're outplaced, you don't have your non-lapsing fund. If that's gone or significantly depleted, you will be going back to the Board of Finance. There's just no question about it. You haven't done that yet, because I think we have an obligation to try and manage within the funds we do have. And we do have some non-lapsing funds and we do have grants coming in. But at some point, we have to make a decision.
And I guess my my point was more not. Maybe my point was more to paint the reality of the picture. Um, you know, of the financial situation when these things happen, and I know everybody knows, everybody says, yeah, I get it, I get it, it's legal, all the stuff, but. Like, the the footwork that you guys are doing to like find money and put it into the budget is just, it's. My hat's off to you to continue to do that.
I'll give you the silliest example, and this is like to the degree we're doing it. I got a purchase order last week for staples for a copier. I denied it. And I said, take them from another copier that has them, see if the other school has some staples in their copier. Or use your manpower. I was, if if we need to staple, I I mean, it it sounds silly, but eighty dollars here, eighty dollars there, that is exactly what we're doing. Um, and trying to make those eighty dollars add up big time for a hundreds of thousands of dollars in the hole.
I I hope when, um, this is all presented to the, um, to the folks that be that. Those kinds of things are conveyed in a way that is impactful.
Storytelling is part of budget, and that's where, uh, when I talk about special education, it's not about individual students, um. And you don't want to come across as like, you know, this is, we're gonna see this every year, that's not the case, but. When things come up, you have to pay for it, it's just the way it is, um, and there's, you know, this is based upon need. With, Marcia doesn't give away the farm, the PPTs, it it's like you get the services that you require, um. And you're not getting like additional hours for all of these extra things, that doesn't happen, it's reasonable, um. It's the little things that, that bu- how that budget impacts other programs. That's really hard to be published in.
Okay.
So if you're gonna make that tran- that motion, it's to transfer fifty thousand dollars from program ten to program three.
I make a motion to, sorry, I forgot, transfer fifty thousand dollars from program ten to program three.
Second up.
Okay, great. Okay, all of those in favor of transferring fifty thousand dollars from program ten to program three, please say aye or aish. Okay, great. Motion has passed, thank you, thanks Anna, could hear me loud and clear. Um, all right, you got the thumbs up on that one.
Thank you, I hope that is, we have good news next time enough to open things up, because I really would like to do that. And it's only a couple weeks away.
Right, yeah, great, uh, twelve, okay, um, moving on to new business, this is a whole lot of approving minutes. Um, the first one is from the regular meeting minutes of January ninth, twenty twenty four. Uh, I guess we have to make a motion to approve, second, and then discuss.
Well, you can, so in in the interest of time, you make a motion to approve the five sets of minutes and do discussion all at once.
I think they be C and B, but yeah, okay, that sounds good, do you wanna go ahead and put those words together?
Uh, I make a motion that the board of education approve the following minutes, uh, the regular minutes from the meeting of January nine, twenty twenty four. The special budget workshop minutes from January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, the special budget workshop minutes from January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. The special budget workshop minutes from January thirty first, twenty twenty four, and the curriculum subcommittee minutes from February seventh, twenty.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Um. On the ones from January ninth, Anne's name was spelled wrong on page three of the. Minutes and page five of our packets under AB, that was the only thing. I wanted to sort of point out, did anybody else have anything they noticed or wanted to add? Okay, um, all right then, all of those in favor of approving said minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, thanks again, Anna, all right, good, um, so here we are, hey, let's talk about the budget. It was like two seconds, but it didn't come up, you know, you gotta go back, good, twenty twenty four to the twenty twenty five budget, all right. What's doing it to do now?
It was just, I would suggest you have a starting point, so if you want to start with, you know, a number. And then you decide from there and it either passes or it doesn't.
Okay, so we have to make our.
Yeah. So if you are going to, uh, uh, because of your discussion earlier, I'm gonna take nine million, five hundred fifty thousand, three hundred ninety seven. Okay, that is where we're at in four point three six, okay, with all the health and the the adjustments and those things that are already been done. With all those additional costs. Uh, underneath the two eighty two, so I'm gonna add.
Right, two eighty two to that number.
Yes, oh, I did see how I did it, I wanted to see that, two eighty two.
Yeah.
Seven eighty three, and so your budget total would be nine million, eight hundred thirty three thousand. One hundred ninety dollars. And actually, what I can do on here is just worry this, because it's live. Nine million, eight hundred thirty three thousand, one hundred ninety dollars. And that would be all of those items plus all the adjustments that have been made.
That includes that special ed teacher?
It does. Fifteen, four, seventy three does correct, so again, with all of these items. Right, so everything we already talked about is already in that four, three, six, and then this would be the additional piece would bring you to this number here.
From the same clarity, can you pop up on the screen? The difference in percentage increase if you remove the special education teacher?
And include everything else?
Everything else, but just take out that ninety eight thousand, one oh six.
So if I take the nine, eight, three, three, one ninety, and I'm gonna take out, cuz I don't have that up top. Um, well, it's, it's, I can tell you right now, it's gonna be like, uh, it's gonna be ninety, about ninety three thousand is a. Or ninety five thousand is a percent, so it's gonna come down in percent. It's gonna do it at the six, four, five, I can give you the exact number by doing the math. Um, ninety eight, one oh six. And you're watching me do this live. Nine, seven, three, five, oh, eight, four, that's with. Teacher. No, no, it's a calculator, um. So the difference is five, eighty three. Six, eleven. And you're at a six, three, eight.
Now, with that position, if we worked towards the goal that you were speaking about in the previous meeting. Um, I don't know the acronym she used, um.
BCBA.
That.
BCBA.
That's me.
So, would we need that person anyways?
So, sh- she referred to two separate things, the BCBA piece that she's referring to. Is one, we have money in right now for a BCBA, for hours. And what she didn't say tonight was the BCB hours are really expensive. Um, we get an outstanding product for those hours. But when you spend that much money, you wanna make sure you know your options, so one, could you? Buy your own BCBA for, and how many hours would you get if you had your own for that same dollar amount? Is one option, continue to contract out is the current option, and the third option is. Hey, can I share with another district that has a similar need for about the same number of hours to make a one point O? A full-time position that we share. And if we put our dollars together, would we then get more hours than we do subcontracting? So, we're trying to do all of those things at once, we know that the BCBA, and this is that, we know the dollar amount we put in. Will match the number of BCB hours we currently need today. But if we could get more, this is one of those areas where, for me, the BCBA is like, it's. If you go to a court case and you go to, um, due process and they say you're talking about. Uh, potentially outplacing someone, and they say, did you put, have an appropriate number of BCB hours, and you you say no, you're gonna lose all day long. So it's an important part of the process, and oftentimes it works, it does, it keeps a student indifferent. So that's what she didn't say tonight, is we're looking at all those options, but we do have a dollar amount in there, special ed teachers is something totally different.
Good. I was just gonna say, what, the funds that are in there now for the BCBA are the hours that are required legally by student plan.
Correct.
Can that individual maybe you can, um. See other students or assist on, uh, with other children?
Yeah, always, I mean, uh, when someone has time in the school district, they don't sit and hang out, like, they're always. We would call call a student that has those significant needs, that's not necessarily identifying special education, a tier three student. Right, so they need additional support, something like Tracy was referring to earlier. You pull up an intervention sound in the classroom that's supposed to be serving that type of student. When you go to PPT, if you said, well, you never gave them a chance, because you're always pulling with the reading teacher, that's not a good argument. So we need to make sure that those services are there, um, I don't know if that makes sense for what you're you're asking about.
I would trade that special education teacher position. Which is addition to what we already have, not something that we presently have in place. For bonus hours with someone, um, a BCBA type individual to come in and, um. Maybe, maybe we can't say pad the IEP hours that are required, but assist with other students who are in that tier three. Um, level.
We may get that already, though.
There's already, there's always.
We may get that already, and that's why we're, you know.
Is there a use for it?
So, I I think that in the program.
Because you're right, John, that's what she said, if she, uh, but I think she was saying she would have that person on staff full time, all the time. I don't think we can swing.
Well, I mean, school districts are hiring, BCB is a full limit, and there's a huge shortage of them, I feel like, yeah, that's. There's definitely justification for having a part-time BCB at the very least in any school district, and. Yeah, the BCB is obligated to cover the hours on the IEP, but, I mean, I've. Console, everything. As, as a person who's done the job and continues to do the job, I, um, do way more than the student's salary, I think, so it's. It's a bonus for the district.
And you can see that eleven thousand dollars, that difference from last year to this year, that's showing our need. And we put that number in also knowing that might put us in a position to. Either hire our own. Or, uh, in definitely part-time, absolutely part-time for that number, um, or. You know, to join with someone else and get that one point O, I talked to, um, union a while back. Um, superintendent up there about PE, cuz he was having a hard time to a position, and we had a half-time health position, and I said. If our schedules were, I can get someone Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and you can get them Thursday, Friday, and we actually had our schedule set and he found someone. Um, and it's so, we're trying to work through that right now to see if there's, and I know there is someone locally, who's we're having this conversation with. Um, to see if we can do a one point O BCB, because the dollar amount there might cover, you know. I I don't wanna scare you, but it's like not even probably two days a week. They make good money. Um, whereas, um, if you join that with someone else, you might get them full time, and then. As need, and this is the problem, as need comes up when they're on your staff. They might spend four days a week in Wilmington. And one day in the other district for a short period of time, the trade-off is always there, you always count your days and make sure it's fair, but. When you have something that's bubbling and needs support and attention, you want that person there.
Can you take a hot second and explain that decision? Because there may be people listening who are not familiar with that.
Yeah, BCBs are, um. A team member for sure that develops behavior plans, um, through functional behavior assessments. Works with teachers to help them with classroom management, um, and. Can lead groups if necessary at the district teams their best. Um, uh, and works with ABA classrooms to develop programming and curriculum. Um, and students who are struggling behaviorally, I have, um, intervened on the. Whatever that's called, the micro level thing in the hallway, um, trying to work through situations with students. Um, and that helps to inform interventions that might affect the student.
Which, again, is so valuable, not just for our special education population, but for anybody with behavioral, um. Needs, helps staff, helps students.
Uh, yeah, that's a big piece of it is the support, like, I've done a lot of PD with the teachers about the. You know, classroom management and behaviors and things like that, and it's helpful for them to have a place to go to ask those questions.
We kinda gathered those questions and when they come in, we. Get them answered.
That, that being said, it's pretty self-serving for me to have this conversation, but, um, I'm. I'm just a wee bit uncomfortable talking about this in the absence of, like, Marcia, because I I don't wanna plan her stuff for her. Um.
I already know, I know all her responses, I wouldn't have let her go if that were the case.
I understand that, and, like. Yeah, okay, she said she did not have.
Trust me, we, we have these conversations regularly, she's the only program I I meet with a monthly basis to review budget and needs. She's the only program.
And I I know just from being in the biz that it's a need everywhere.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't wanna, I can't say how much of a need, like, I, I'm.
She told you, she told you what she's looking for in that dollar amount, that's what she told you. And she was hesitant to increase, and that was just the definition, but she was hesitant to go to that number just because of the increase, the. The number we're dealing with this year in special ed, um. But I flat out told her, you need to, it's a needs-based budget, you put in the need, yes, I know it's an eleven thousand dollar increase, I see it. But you're telling me based upon the hours that you have in IEPs that need BCB hours, that's what you need, and the answer is yes.
She was very clear and transparent when she explained that program to everyone as well, so there's no question what she's doing, what she's acting through.
No, if you look at her history of being here, I mean, she has been really sharp about needs. I mean, the number of pairs that were down because of how she's looking at hours and scheduling. Making most of of how we, you know, maximize our huge capital, she's doing a great job, and that's a prime example of that.
Okay, so we are currently.
Go back down to that, sorry for making you dizzy.
Those four additions. Um. Are we all in agreement about adding the facilities director for that dollar amount?
Yes.
Rhonda, may I ask a question?
Of course.
We move on to this, um, Phil, did we get any communication from the board of finance? Once in a while they'll send us a letter, something, and let, you know, they'll give us a ballpark figure.
Uh, so, uh, I have not, but the last I heard, they were still trying to approve the letter, but. And we are already well beyond our process, and to be really frank. I I've I've read the letter and said thank you very much in prior years, because we budget for what we need, not what we want. Um, yeah, always able to explain that, I think, when we have our, our presentation. Um, yeah, always able to explain that, I think, when we have our our presentation in front of that.
Okay, very good.
They just wanted to know if there were anything, any, if you put anything big and new in your budgets, they wanted to make sure we discussed that when we did our presentation, which I will do.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay. So, the director, yes. So do we have to make a motion for that, or is that, we can decide from the discussion about? There was a discussion about those four things there, then we're gonna get our dollar amount and our percentage increase, and that is what we need to specifically hold on. I asked earlier if we needed to have a vote to add any of those things, and Wilson knows it's a matter of our agreement here. So that's why now I'm going back. So, does anybody oppose the idea of adding the facilities director then? You're good, you're good, you're good. And are you fine with that?
Yep, I agree.
Okay, okay. Then we're gonna move down to make decisions about the special education teacher. I heard her say she did not need that. I would love to support that program and pad it any way that we can. That's why I was asking about the B C B A situation. Does anybody want to restate their thoughts? As well. And?
Um, my thought would be that um if we submitted submitted it, the budget in whole as we have here, and if they did come back and say that we needed to cut something, that might be my first thing to consider for cutting.
Well, they would come back and, sorry, they would come back and tell us just the number that they want, cut a hundred thousand dollars, and we'd have figured it out on our own where we want to figure, cut that, correct?
Yes.
I I agree with you, and that was my, I kind of had that thought process as well, but I don't want to support a, I feel weird about supporting a budget where that's kind of a sacrificial lamb. Like, if I feel like the special ed department really needs a special education teacher, I will go to the math for that. Um, I I just feel like based on the conversation that we have with Marsha tonight, I'm not, I, I don't, I think the other things are important enough to go to the math for, if you will.
I disagree. Um, if you very, listen very carefully to the words, there's a lot of, we make do, we're creative, we find ways, and that's not how I want the school system to operate. I don't want them to be creative. I don't want them to have to find ways. I want them to have what they need to do their jobs for the kids. That's what I want. I don't, I don't feel this is a want. I feel this is a need to stop having to be creative, to stop having to find ways to make things work. That's why I'm wishing for those.
And if it was a need, when Marsha was sitting in the chair saying, I absolutely one hundred percent need another special education teacher because the services in Wilmington are suffering, because we don't, because the caseloads are too huge, there's not enough, mi- person power to go around, I'm all for that. That's not what I heard. And like, I don't know, I I've kind of, I don't want to beat it to death, but, I think the other things that are, that we're proposing to add tonight are clearly a need. Like, there's, you can tie that directly to successes or failures. Um, e- everybody would like more teachers, um, and I don't mean to be cavalier about it because I'm in the business, but um, I'm just concerned about that.
This is, so I think one thing that I I could do, if you don't put that in there, is a special ed ed teacher as an additional, is I think that's important, that would be in short important to share with the Board of Finance, to say, look, we watch our numbers, right? This is something that we had a really strong conversation about, and and it could have gone either way, depending on if it's not there. But to very clearly say, if anything happens from budget approval to the start of the school year with numbers of of cases, like, we might be coming back to you to ask for support. Because eh, let's face it, if people leave, if they were to leave, eh, you know, you still have to service kids. I don't know, that's something I I could try and formulate, um, just to help them understand your feeling on this, Arthur, because I I do, there's, there's value in all of the conversation, right? Always, how can we best support kids? And it's my job to give you a reason, a reasonable budget. Michelle always pushed me on this as as board chair. You know, you came in reasonable again, what, are there any things that you're leaving out? There's always things we leave out. Your example is probably one of them, right? In prior years, I've left in a kindergarten teacher to keep classes small. Like, that's something that we always look at, is to, because we know that there's gonna be pushback on it. So, uh, you know, I don't know how I I, you know, if I can convey that to the Board of Finance, and it doesn't necessarily solve the problem from your perspective, but just to help them understand, like, look, this is something that, you know, just like an outplacement, if numbers continue to grow, it might be something that we have to come back to you to ask for. I don't know how that was applied, but.
I don't think it's gonna take the Board of Finance a lot of convincing, because the number, the percentage number looks scary at seventy point four five, but if you look at the actual dollar increase, it's just over half a million dollars. That's not a lot. I mean, it is, it is in a vacuum in the grand scheme of things, especially what we're looking to do and what we have to do. It's not a large increase, and I think, I think leaving out special education teacher is a huge mistake.
I personally think leaving it in is a good idea, because it gives us, say if they do come back at us, it gives us more ideas on how to move money around and make things work.
So I I, again, I feel like we are putting ourselves in a position where we're telling, giving Marsha stuff that she hasn't asked for. If we're talking about adding something to special education, she very clearly talked about B C B A stuff. And so we brought that, we had talked about that, and Phil suggested that there's uh, plans in place to address that need right now. And I I hear what you guys are both saying. Any staff we can get is better than um the staffing levels we have now. I'm just trying to go by what people are saying when they present their budgets. And to me, the special education teacher is kind of extra. And I would have a hard time presenting that to the Board of Finance as a needs-based budget. I mean, is there something else we can do that is helpful? That is not that specific, that particular position? I I feel like it would be nearly burdensome to to say, okay, now you have a person, Marsha, you have to do something with this person. And I I do not agree with, like, padding a budget, because you know things are gonna get cut. I do not agree with that. I don't think that's in the vein of what we're trying to do overall, anyway. Um.
Do you want an example? Are you asking for an example?
What I was gonna ask you, sir, is what the quote is that you say about things being right? Just because, what is it that you say? Just because it's okay doesn't make it right? Is that what you say? Well, and Arthur's overarching statement about how, like, making it work is not how it should be. And that's a hundred, I a hundred percent agree with that. That's our ultimate, right? Just because it's, what did you say? Just because it's, it works doesn't make it right?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I can give you an example of something that, uh, like, we don't put everything out there in front of you with what we're we're problem solving with. And and this might be a compromise that, um, I know she would say, well, that's a great compromise. Um, we've talked about the potential of hiring reading-specific trained folks that can service um specific special education hours. So I'm gonna give you a really specific example. Um, Wilson is a program for teaching reading that is very specific. You need to be, if you're gonna, and I always talk about court cases, you need to be certified in their program to teach there to to say, I'm teaching Wilson, okay? If you can go to a three-day course, you can do Wilson, but it doesn't mean you're a Wilson teacher, if that makes sense. If we were looking to support staff members in making hours, and this is something Marsha and I have talked about, um, that is another avenue. She was talking about a special ed teacher to build a program for the future. This would be the other conversation that she and I have had, is really around hiring a um, a special education certified teacher who has um very specific reading training, uh, Wilson training. They exist. We have one now. She's gonna be retiring because she can't work beyond what we're doing. It might be something that she'd be willing to do, and we guarantee it. At the elementary level, it would make a difference for hours. Because not every staff member we have has that training, but it sure that makes a difference. So I'm just giving you a different example. It's not B C B A behavior-related, it's not just general special education, I'm gonna build a program. That's another specific item that Marsha and I have talked about, potentially writing the I D E A grant towards. Like, if I could buy twenty hours a week, if I could buy ten hours a week of specialized reading instruction, that's a number you could put on without hitting ninety-eight thousand dollars. And I guarantee it's something that makes a difference. We're just doing it in a different fashion right now.
Are you able to find someone who's got that? For you on a schedule?
I think the person that we have right now would be willing to do that.
Oh, okay. Yes, you said that, I'm sorry.
I I I do, and 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 um, you know, the the factors around, like, uh, this is what, so, retired teachers are willing to work on things that they want to work on, passion projects. And uh, you know that behavior situations are really stressful for everyone. And those are the things that typically retired teachers don't want to come back and manage, because they, uh, it's a lot of work, right? Um, however, there are probably retired special edu- education teachers who do have expertise. Gordon Gillingham trained, um, could be C K L A trained, depending on what it is. The one I'm really leaning towards in in Wilson's, just one example, but, um, to have someone with that training that to provide intervention hours and meet um special ed hours as an additional support, that wouldn't be, I'm gonna call it haphazard, meaning like, we now have two case managers, I'm providing part of your hours. It would be okay. It would be doable. Um, that might be something that would work. And they can only earn a certain amount of money for for hours, uh, or dollars based upon the state retirement laws. But they can earn forty-five percent of the max teacher salary in district.
So what would be a number? You said not ninety-eight thousand, or eighty?
Um. It would be, so, you could do it one of two ways. One is you may, you keep, you hire that person, or you pay them on a c- contract basis where they're an independent contractor. So if you're gonna pay them based upon, um,
So maybe we'll benefit then.
Um, they can waive, eh eh, and we don't offer benefits until point five. So, and I'm just doing rough numbers, because that's how it would be done, but if you're looking at, you're probably close to the forty-five percent. You're probably in the forty, you're in the forty thousand dollar range for some fast math that you could pay someone to work, you know, a certain number of hours. It's basically a half-time gig.
So what would bring that percentage down? Probably you're closer to six or under, just under six, because of that thirty-eight percent.
You'd probably be, so if you add the um, the, so if you're looking at the nine million seven hundred thirty-five thousand eighty-four dollars without the special education teacher, if you put, because the benefits are expensive, we were, we're, we have family benefits in there at like twenty-seven thousand, um, you'd probably be in the, you'd be under seven. You'd be under seven for sure.
Another question is, Marsha said we have seven special ed teachers between two schools. How many are at home, or are you sending?
There are one to one at, um, meaning grade level, five, six, seven, eight.
So there's four, and then one.
And the reason why is they set that up, she did that programmatically, because they were finding scheduling, trying to have a special education teacher follow two different grade levels was impossible, so hard. Whereas the elementary schedule, because they're not rotating classes, it's it's easier. But if you're looking, I I can guarantee you right now that she would, um, she would support hours for additional reading training. That would take some strain hours off of, um, her, her, special ed teachers. And that potentially could be K eight.
And it could target.
It doesn't necessarily have to be central. It's just I P specific.
Would that fall under the special ed budget money?
It would.
So wouldn't it be smart to keep the ninety-eight, but partially toward B C, I don't know, sorry.
B C B A, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do one point O B C B A. Um, eh, she can't justify that right now.
Oh, okay. I thought I heard her say she did want someone.
She wants, she wants someone that's more hours and in our buildings and not fighting for scheduling time. That's, that's definitely doable. Um, I don't think she has ah enough hours for one point O B C B A, which is why she only put forty-six thousand in.
That's what I was asking about, that person working with other students besides those that are, um, specifically as well, the education. And I'm concerned with other people. Okay, how do we take the load off a little bit? That's what you were trying to figure out, right?
No, no, I'm not trying to figure out. Not at all.
Wasn't that why? Isn't that why?
No, no, my my decision would be all that stays. I'm not trying to make any more of them. So, that's not me.
No, isn't that why you? Yeah, you were looking for a way to.
Yeah, add an additional body to to alleviate some of the stuff.
Okay. That's the goal. How do we? Special education specifically?
Yeah, because I need another grade, not currently at least.
True, but maybe a service, that could be a very beneficial service, adding reading considering we need.
I'm just, I'm gonna text her, says that's what I was, I'm driving my phone, sorry.
We need reading, you know, one of the concerns we keep hearing about is is test scores.
And COVID decline, yeah.
And so adding someone in the building, what we take, if we were to keep, you know, having someone specialized with reading would be beneficial. And having that directed towards a special ed, it it is, um, it is an issue, because when you're, when you're trying to provide intervention to students for reading, the, there's only so much reading specialists can do, and the special ed teachers may not be trained, so adding that person in is really, would would take the load off instructionally from that caseload if the certain student's need is, um, really based. And give, spread out the resources the way Arthur's wanting to, uh, you know, suggesting, because it's just giving that extra person. So it's, it might be a comprom- a compromise, but a beneficial one in more than one way.
Can you clarify? So you're, the way you're practicing this is that you have, currently have a person now, and you're looking, this would give them more hours, or would just retain them for longer?
It would retain them. If it were the same person, if they were interested, um, Joanne Cameronski, I'm just gonna say her name, is certi- a certified Wilson reading instructor. She has been through numerous hours of professional development. They come out and watch you teach. You have to submit things, like, she is a Wilson certified teacher. Um, if she were interested in doing some of that, and if Marsha was supportive of that, um, that's something that that could be K eight, so, you wouldn't necessarily be hiring a one-point-O special ed teacher. You'd be buying, buying basically a block of hours to support students along the way and really specialize instruction, um, re-instruction.
So then clarify for me, how would? What you're proposing change what she does now?
She's retiring.
Oh, so you're trying to just keep her on?
So she she can't work because she's a retired teacher, she can't work beyond this year. Um the way she can work is she can work and earn up to forty five percent of her for the highest salary. That's the, that's the Connecticut Teacher Retirement Board's rule. Um and the only exception is you can work in a shortage area for two years and collect, do both. And full salary. So we have two teachers that are doing that right now, they're both retired, they're both probably going to go back to retire. Retirement, but if I said, hey, if you're interested in just doing reading. Um her flat out answers with three exclamation marks is yes. So I said, if we didn't do a specialized teacher but added hours for specialized readings such as Wilson, would you support that? And she said, yes.
That's Marsha.
That's Marsha. And she's typing more, so um again, like when I say we have conversations, I know where. And I understand your comment, like where we make do and we where we're providing good services, they're not um the best services because the best services cost a lot of money. You want good services throughout and not have any spots where we're we're struggling. Um having that expertise in reading could make a difference for a lot of case managers, not just one. If you put a specialized teacher in center school, you're gonna impact specialized case managers in center school, you're not gonna impact whole. If you worked higher hours for um a B C B A, you impact K eight. If you hire a reading um hours, you you get reading hours through someone, you're impacting K eight. And I'm not saying three K because it's such a specific program.
Um what worst case scenario if the person that you have in mind doesn't do it or doesn't want to do it, how readily could we fill that position?
Her response, I don't know, but she said a dyslexia consultant who can consult with P P T teams, evaluate and service students would be ideal. So that type of person is exactly what I'm thinking about and they have to be a certified. Um special education teacher because if they're gonna service kids, you need that certification.
And what did you wanna?
Yeah, I think um Arthur, I think this kind of addresses your concern. Because by bringing in this specialized reading person, there's going to be some children whose I E P say so many hours a week in Wilson. And those spec- current specialized teachers are teaching that, so that's gonna free them up with a lot of extra time. Which I think was your concern at the beginning, that we have more time for um. The specialized teachers who are doing so much, so I think this might be a good way to accomplish your goal.
So we have to figure out how to how to fix a dollar value to that. Because it's going into the line of budget. And it'll be underneath the program for special education. Um. How do we? Find a dollar value for that? And it involves benefit situation too.
It will. Because it'll be under halftime. It'll be under halftime. I just said thirty five thousand's a question mark and she said that would absolutely work. That's a lot of hours. But sorry.
Yeah, what would that give us?
I can't answer that question and the reason I can't is because it depends on their experience. Because they would fall under um the contract. You're fine. Um it would fall under the contract, so I could hire someone at top step who's making ninety thousand a year as a teacher. And it would just be prorated by, you know, they're a point four person, they'd get point four of that, right? But if I find someone like, hey, this person's an expert, they're the highest, you know, they've gone through all of these trainings, they're fresh out. They have amazing recommendations and they're making fifty six. Less likely to be that person at fifty six, but point four to fifty six. You see what I'm saying? And that means you have two days a week, depending on the person. Some people are like, especially retirees, they're like, I don't wanna work a full day. But point four is a certain number of hours, and so they might say. You know what, if I can work nine to to eleven every day and and that works within your schedule and I can meet with students, perfect.
We have a need though for a full time person, not a point four?
No.
No, okay.
And that's what Marsha's point is, like, her point is she's not saying um. You know, that she. She would like an additional specialized teacher, it would it would bring caseloads down, it would it would help out some um. Her bigger need, she was saying the B C B A piece, which I do think we are, we have been working on for a while. Um and we'd have to actually, the board would actually have to have some sort of policy about how we would share that staff number. Cuz where we run into i- issues is like benefits and whose contract do you under? And you under both contracts, so those are things that we're we're, you know, we're on. Um but she and I have talked about the reading piece being really important, dyslexia is, you know, a newer piece, that might be something that. You'd basically say, you take that nine million seven hundred thirty five thousand and just make it nine million seven hundred seventy thousand eighty four. And this, well, I I mean, in the grand scheme of things, I can give you the percentage afterwards. You don't need to give the percentage, you don't need to give the increase. The dollar increase, what you need to give, you need to approve a number.
Yeah, I'm just curious uh because I'm thinking about our.
So if you want me to do.
Of her taxpayers and um what looks. Palatable, although.
So do we want to change it to that um part time number then? Instead of the ninety three?
What, sorry, I'm talking. What's your question?
No, I just wondered if we wanted to change that ninety eight to more like that, what, thirty five, forty five? Um number?
I think Phil's working on it. Just curiously typing on a variety of keyboards.
Okay, very good.
So let me make sure I just did that right, cuz I think I did, a week for plus thirty five thousand is nine seven seven zero zero eight four. Correct, nine one five one four seven three. Yes. Six seven, yep, six seven six.
But we don't think Marsha would want a B C B A and.
She might, she's, she might get that as well, she she that's what we're working on, we're gonna get, we're using that dollar amount just to get buy more hours.
Okay.
And the only way I can explain this to you is the same way I gave you the last example, like, we use Eastcon. Eastcon has outstanding, outstanding, it's like regionally one of the best B C B A programs. But they are expensive. And if you hire your own, it's not, might not be as expensive and you're gonna get more hours. So if we share that service or hire our own within that dollar amount, we might get more, that's what we're still investigating. Best way to stretch that dollar, but we know that dollar amount will buy us the the number of hours we need to Eastcon.
Okay, we don't need a budget for anything for that?
It's already in there.
Okay.
Forty six thousand's in there for B C B A hours.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, I'm gonna check that out.
I think anything under seven was beyond reasonable.
And I'm honestly, I'm glad to have her come in and do a presentation on just on that, on what that would look like, she would. I mean, there's, we talk about need, things that we like, how do we do this? That's one, that's one thing that we we talk about every single year, how do we keep that? How do we keep that? Because it takes a lot of hours. If you get a new specialized teacher, they don't have that expertise yet, they're a generalist in special education and. We train them on the reading stuff. But to get like Gordon Gillingham trained or to get Wilson trained is a huge commitment, huge commitment, right? You know, you, right? I mean, Tracy, you can speak to that.
You eat, sleep and breathe reading for a year. One hundred hours of tutoring students and being observed. To to earn that certification.
Yep.
And then you can go beyond, but that one hundred hours is, it's huge.
Like their first checkpoint to say that you have the certification, but then there's like different levels of it to keep it going. It's.
I um I definitely appreciate this entire conversation and it feels. That that feels better to have that targeted specific. Um service to take the load off of the other folks so that they can then do something else. Um that to me makes sense. I agree. Okay, taking it from the top. We're gonna, we're going to add that facilities director position. And we're gonna add the staff support specialist position and we are going to also add the maintenance repair fund as well. It sounds to me like our board would also like to add. I don't know how you say it. Do we still label this?
Do you just need a number?
Just need the nine million one number.
You you know what that's gonna be for, it'll be, it'll come across as when I update your budget document. I'm basically just gonna calculate what that employee would be at a certain dollar amount. So when I put in a um, we have a placeholder right now in the budget for like step five masters. Because with Joanne leaving, I need to put a dollar amount in there, and so in the budget for teachers, that's I put a placeholder that's uh about middle of the road. So it doesn't. Force me to to get top step or or bottom, I would do the same thing for this, I would say, this would get you about uh point three five, I'm just making it up. And that we would add that to the staff and we would add the thirty five thousand to the number. That's how you get it, you, it and again, it just comes down to who you hire, you might get more hours, you might get less, it depends on their expertise and where they're hired.
Nine seven seven zero gives us.
The facilities director, the staff support specialist, the maintenance repair funds. And it also gives you thirty five thousand dollars towards a dyslexia reading teacher consultant.
All right, let's bring this to a vote, so we need somebody to make a motion. For that dollar up to. Approve. That as our budget, is that what we're trying to do?
Establish the board of education budget for twenty four twenty five to be nine million seven hundred seventy thousand eighty four dollars.
I make the motion to establish the board of education budget as nine million seven hundred seventy thousand eighty four dollars. For twenty.
For twenty five. Yep.
Seven.
And you need to discuss further.
I'm fine with the compromise. I can promise you, if it ever comes back in my tenure, that another special education user is needed. You will never hear the end of it from me, I mean, I promise you. But that is where I'm stipulating.
Well, that's good teamwork.
So.
I I don't wanna be perceived as a person who's standing in the way of a special education teacher being hired if it's necessary, that's on.
That's on.
Okay. Um. I look for, can we do a roll call, I'd rather.
Sure, as long as, does somebody have, you have the number written down cuz I think it's good to come off off of the shared screen when you vote.
Yes.
Nine million seven hundred seventy thousand eighty four dollars.
Okay, um coming around to see if you affirm this vote, so Anne?
I.
Arthur?
Yes.
Jen, I'm John.
Hi.
Tracy.
Hi.
I am also I. And we have passed.
Good work, that was a lot, that was. So that's conversation, I think I see as a superintendent, so.
Okay, um. Let's talk about our custodial substitute pay rate.
Yeah, this should be quick. We had a a couple of custodians out, which never happens at the same time, um and we've. In my time, I've never had the board approve a rate. And we went through the contract and like it says part time, but they're not part time permanent. So just as you do for subs, you approve a number. I think you should approve a number for a sub custodian, um and. Basically what I did is I took the contract and I looked at what the hourly would be. At the bottom. Um and then because there's a a good chance that a sub custodian. There's in the contract, they get additional um a differential for working later hours. So after everything after six P M is is an additional like course or something like that, we calculated that in. And with the shift differential, um my recommendation is that you pay fifteen dollars and forty three cents per hour. Um and that's what we would offer a sub custodian. As the rate.
So are they different than teachers, cuz teachers, substitute teachers you offer per day, we don't offer hourly.
Correct. Yeah, because they're they're by day, so honestly, it allows us a little more flexibility too because some people might say, well, I can I can give you four hours. And we'll take four hours. Um I expect that the the, you know, we, I I didn't feel comfortable not including differential of the average. And so we just did, you know, four hours would be fifteen twenty eight, four hours would be fifteen fifty eight. When you add them and just divide by the eight hours, it's fifteen forty three, that's how we came up with a number.
Isn't like a statement of fifteen sixty nine?
Is it now? I thought I'm still, I thought I was still under it.
I just Googled it cuz I I knew it was moving, January first.
Good catch. We must have done this before that then, I wonder. You're right, no, you're a hundred percent right, we looked at the old rate, you're a hundred percent right.
Yeah.
Cuz we removed our cafeteria staff. Thank you so much, good catch. So I would just say the minimum.
Do you think we'd get staffing at that price point? That's what I was gonna ask.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe. Not running machines for that price range, but someone that wants to work a second job to empty trash and wash and pour the vacuum. I do.
You know.
I I also, I'm very cognizant of what our. Younger, uh and I'm gonna say that our younger current custodians that are our our employees, what they make. I don't wanna offer anything near what what they're making because they've been here for years now and they're still.
Right, you don't wanna insult them.
Correct. You know, they need, it needs to be close, I mean. If you wanted to do the shift differential and include that into the factor. You know, you're talking about. Fifteen eighty, fifteen eighty five?
While you're on there, is it say when it goes up again?
I think it's done now.
Is it done?
Yeah, this was the one, I forgot about this, this was the surprise one. That the governor ju- didn't tell anybody and just came out and said, we're gonna increase minimum wage again, cuz we had a four year, three or four year rollout. And we did that for all the um the wages that we had, I, this is the last one that I know.
I don't see anything. That was a good question, cuz he could do the same thing next year. That was a good question. Cause he could do the same thing next year.
He could and you're, you'll have to, yeah. And honestly, you'll have to readjust contracts at that point, which I don't know how people are doing that. Cause it just rolls. You have to push everybody up. You can't just bring the bottom people up. That's not right. Which we've done, we've done it right in Wellington. When we've moved up any of our cafeteria staff, the people that have been here for ten years. The gap was like so small, we moved everybody off as, uh, along the way as well. I think that's the right way to do it, but it gets expensive when you're talking about big groups. So if you, if you want, I mean, I would say anything under sixteen dollars. Um, between fifteen sixty nine and sixteen dollars, I think is as a sub.
I mean, I'm not sure how much difference we would get in the quality of. Work, quality of the work between fifteen sixty nine and sixteen dollars. Like if. The only benefit to, to doing it above fifteen sixty nine is saying that we pay a buck minimum payings.
Yeah.
Even if it's fifteen seventy or whatever, sixteen seventy. I don't know.
It, it doesn't, I'm gonna tell you, it doesn't happen often and we cover, we just, you know, we, we adjust. And change tasks if we're stuck and we don't have a sub, that's what we do. But when we had numerous custodians out at once. It was hard.
Do, do we have to wait a full year to re-adjust this if we want to, or this can come on?
No, you can, what, honestly, what I'll do is when we do the rates for, um, the cafeteria again. Uh, and, and subs, we do them in the same meeting, I'll add this to that meeting.
Okay.
It's usually Ju- July or August, I think.
Is this below the cafeteria workers pay?
Yeah. Yeah, a- a- and there might be a, someone on there that's making minimum wage.
Okay.
Currently, if they're brand new.
So if we're having trouble finding people or we're finding like, we don't use this all that often, so it's fine.
We don't, yeah.
Then we can adjust, okay.
I just need, I didn't wanna post something for a substitute without saying that the hourly rate list, I just, I don't wanna waste people's time.
So in the absence of this being a policy, do you want a motion to those?
Yeah, I would, correct.
Alright, so now I make a motion of the board of education, approve substitute custodial pay at the amount of fifteen dollars and sixty nine cents.
Second. Further. Okay, uh, favorite, please signify.
Aye.
Thank you, Mary. Okay. Yeah, that was in that same category, that would be great. Cause then we're always. Rechecking it, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, we are moving on to old business item twelve, which is the twenty four twenty five. Wellington Public School Calendar Survey Results and then Present Draft. To be approved tonight.
Yes, please, I hope. Um, so. We did the survey and I didn't do a jazzy, um, presentation or anything for you. I just threw this on. Um, the things on the Bob are aligned to the colors. It was only because of when you, uh, copied the question. Or the graph in that they automatically did through the program, you could read the whole statement here. So basically what it comes out is fifty six percent say leave it the way it is. Um, the red is move conferences later into December and have full days of school on the Monday, Tuesday before Thanksgiving. That was the smallest group. Move conferences earlier in November and have full days of school on the Monday, Tuesday before Thanksgiving. That was the nineteen point two percent. And I'm gonna tell you, that's what we moved away from because then Thanksgiving was really broken up. And then the greens make the Tuesday of Thanksgiving. We have a full day off from school for students to teachers, facility conferences all day long. I'm not convinced that, um, that can be done. It would be a very, very long day for teachers, but it was nineteen two per, point two percent. It's a majority that say leave it the way it is. It's not a huge majority, but we did get a hundred and twenty seven responses, which is decent. Remember that's staff and families. Um, and then. In the people that said move, uh, reasons to move conferences, there were forty six responses. It's a busy week. I don't disagree. Multiple half days are more disruptive. I think if you move the half days someplace else, it's gonna continue to be disruptive. One full day would allow parents to take less time off from work. I, maybe, I don't know. Um, late conferences for working parents, it is a lot. It is for teachers as well. Um, childcare is difficult for half days. We offer childcare, but not on those days. And maybe next year with our program, we will. That would help. Um, conferences earlier in the year, we give parents an update on their child's progress earlier in the year. There's a valid point in that. The other solutions that people had, there were twenty five responses. These are, and I tried to give you snapshot like what were the main themes. Half day assemblies each Friday, you can tell that was done by a staff member, like maybe that's, um, a solution. Um. Hold conferences on Veterans Day, no school held for students. Schedule two half days, but not back to back. That's actually an interesting idea. Um, and then the last one was Monday half day. Tuesday, full day of conferences, no school for students, and then Wednesday off. Um, looking for a longer break, I think, but, um. You do make it up somewhere. Uh, and then the other calendar feedback was interesting. Uh, more PD at the start of school year, I thought that was probably a staff member. Consistency with the state, other districts regarding week-long vacations, we have it. Um, it's the best it has ever been, ever. Especially for vacation. Start students earlier in August to get out earlier in June. Um, you will probably have to do that. You'll have a really long summer of the year you do your roof. So you'll get out early and you'll start late that summer. So leave as much time to do the roof projects as possible.
But then with their conditions.
Right. People just said thankful for childcare being provided. Uh, extend winter break. This is an interesting thought. Extend winter break and come back to school on December sixth, uh, that's supposed to say January, I think. Two full weeks, I'll show you that in a second. Add Juneteenth to the calendar, the school year extends that date. Was written several times, same thing with the indigenous people day. Um, change the half days to Wednesdays instead of Fridays. Uh, I don't know. If that was parents or staff, but I think that, um, we. Would see some issues with that, that's harder. Start school after Labor Day. So some general feedback. The one that was about the, um, I'm sorry, that typo, the, the, the winter break. Is they're talking about this. We come back on a Thursday for two days. And their suggestion would be, hey, why don't we just come back on the sixth? Give everybody two weeks, full weeks off from school. It would bump out the last day of school to June thirteenth.
That would.
So there's, that was the feedback. So we, the, the whole goal of the survey was. Why would people wanna move conferences? That was the point. We had, we got some additional feedback on some things, but the majority of people are saying. Leave it alone and here's why. It's, it's long. You have to do conferences. I'm not sure anyway, other way around, the half days, full days, but. Um. Questions about the feedback?
I have any questions, but I'm glad that we did. Uh, I'm glad we got the responses because there's actually some really interesting responses in there. And I know that it was something that. A bit of pain, but it kind of extended this thing another month and a half, but I'm actually, I'm actually glad we didn't get the responses that we did.
Kind of verifies like, hey, this is what we were thinking. Our, is the majority of people. And, and I think that's what it shows. Are there some things that we always consider? We constantly reflect on these things, like there's some ideas that are in there that we could consider in the future or. Um, you know, be creative and.
The Wednesday of Thanksgiving off, we do that in my district and it is really nice. Because then you're not traveling in the afternoon or. Preparing in the, like you get that whole day off. It, we do have to make it up somewhere, but it makes, I don't know, it's. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
To have day already.
Not an instruction day.
Right.
Ever. I mean, really.
I think from a staff perspective, I don't know about families on that one. Um, that would be harder or easier. But from a staffing perspective, it would make a longer, a long week shorter, if you know what I mean.
Especially if you're doing.
Just retire, right, with conferences on Monday, Tuesday, and maybe that Tuesday night is your last night. And then you're on break on Wednesday, again. To. From a staff perspective, I think they would, would like that.
Some families maybe appreciate their children going to school for half day on a Wednesday so they can run around and vacuum.
I'm, I'm looking at it from for staff.
Can you just pull the calendar back a little?
Yes, absolutely.
Not suggesting we do it here, just saying, some, we do do it.
Anything you wanna say in particular?
No, I just wanted to give them one, one quick, one more once over.
Trying to pull it back a little bit.
Is it the same amount of PDAs next year that it was this year or they?
Um, we, we, um, I think we were eight half days and now I think, or six. It, it, this is a little bit more of the half days. But I think where they are aligned, like going into those long weekends. Really are good. And that was something I reached a staff survey and the half day requests are on there. Um, their feedback is those half days make a really big difference. Um, and just. Really, they're planned, but they're, they're a little more flexible with what they can accomplish on those half days. Um, because in the grand scheme of things, it's like two and a half hours. Sometimes kids leave. But they're getting locked out at those times, especially rolling down the units and things, so.
And we're trying to take, have this reading program take off.
That was directly tied to their comments.
They need as much time as possible.
But the only word that, and I would just change this because it's not really necessarily part of the calendar, um, dates. This childcare will be provided on professional development days. Brendan wasn't off, she didn't work today. Uh, I would change that, cause that sounds like it's provided to everybody. It will be offered. Um, is how it will be worded, just so you know that.
Any motions?
Then go forward.
Um. I'm going to accept the calendar for the twenty four twenty five. School year as presented with that minor change. Alright, any further discussion? All good. Okay, all those in favor of approving and accepting the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Wellington Public School Calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, survey complete and calendar approved. Okay, we moved on to item three thirteen, which is presence to speak. We don't have anyone here in person to share their thoughts. And I don't see any hands raised online. Thanks, thank you. Okay, thank you. Alright, we had made it to board comment, okay. Um, did anybody have anything else they wanted to share?
Yeah, nobody's gonna go, so we'll go. Um. As was mentioned earlier, this Friday is the H M F Gala, which is for not just H M F, it's at H M F, that's for all students. Uh, my first Gala attendance was last year. It's a lot of fun. The kids have a fantastic time. Uh, the only reason I bring it up again is because I was a bit disappointed last year in the lack of staff and, um. Staff in. Faculty, this got the facility, I know it was wrong. Faculty, um, participation. I understand. Teachers have long days. I get it and I get that it's a Friday or weekend and you don't, you know, you wanna get to the weekend, I understand. But it was a lot of fun to see the kids. Um, have a good time. And I think they would enjoy seeing some more of their teachers there. There were some teachers there, but those teachers all had kids who were at the dance. Um, but I think the kids would get a kick out of seeing a few more of the teachers there dressed up, um, and enjoying the night. So I encourage any, any staff or faculty that's watching that may have a couple hours on Friday. To come down to the Gala again, it supports, it supports P T A. Um, it's a great event there. And the other thing I wanted to say was I need to give a big thank you to Matt. From Public Works, who if you go to the transfer station, you've seen Matt. Um, the popcorn machine that was shown earlier in the center school presentation. Was sitting on a very rickety stool when it was first there. So I asked Matt, when I saw him at the transportation, keep an eye out on the swap check if anybody dropped off a. Decent looking end table. And within the next day, he had somebody call me. He, he had found one for me, so I went down to get it. And now the popcorn machine is very stable on a nice end table for center. So a big thank you to him and the anonymous Wellington donor. Um, people swap checked and did it, but, uh, thanks to him for looking out for us for Center School.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm hoping they're all in bed, but the kids who came to participate in the meeting tonight was really great. Um. And I look forward to that ongoing feedback.
Exactly what I was gonna say, Steve was just morning. It was a great idea. Um, I also, eye opener with the data that the principal showed. Glad she's getting a handle on it and moving forward with that.
Alright, wait, wait, sorry. Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll second what's already been said, um. And, um. Appreciate the work that, that Phil and, um. Is it Matt again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Different man.
Yep.
Helping out to, uh. To get out there and get your hands dirty, take care of. Repetitive problem, hopefully we'll solve it, um. You know, best of luck to John Collins. He's spent a lot of time. Had both of my kids through. Through, uh, S P E teacher. He's been wonderful here, so we wish him best of luck and, uh. Welcome to Victor and. Clay Lee's. Um, there's also, yeah, enough, a lot of whom sent too.
Correct.
And I appreciate, um, all the thoughtful. Suggestions and con- conversations we've had over the budget. It's been, um. Different ideas came up and it were, I know we don't like to be creative, but I think, I think we were creative in our, our thoughts and. Very thoughtful about building. Accepting the budget that Phil presented, but also making it, well, um, we all think is.
Anne, did you wanna wrap anything up?
You did.
You're muted, Anne.
Anne, you're muted.
Okay, thank you. The only two things, um, I can think of, I want to say a special, um, congratulations to Rebecca Pilver. Um, she was two of my grand, presently and was my other grandchild's teacher during COVID. So that's when, so I really wanna congratulate her on her retirement and look forward to her continuing to work with us. And also Joanne, um, and she, is she the other one, Phil, that may also continue to work with us after she retires again?
We'll see.
Yeah. So thank you to, to all of them for their hard work.
Thank you. Okay, um, there's a C I P meeting tomorrow night, the twenty first at seven P M here at the. Towns building. And then Thursday night, the Board of Confidences meeting here as well. Um, and I'm sure that our budget will be part of their discussion. So if anybody's able to participate, help watch later. Um, I encourage everyone to do that because this, spend a lot of work all around and. The more, uh, support we have, the better. Okay, um, I am ready to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Say bye.
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 Thank you everyone. Have a really nice night.